Good evening. The April 11th, 2017 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Ms. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Ms. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Ms. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Ms. Rebecca Cook, Program Specialist, please introduce the following individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good afternoon. Today, we are recognizing math count students and their coaches. We will begin with a pledge led by Nikitha Gumati from Howard Middle School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Daniel Liu? Daniel Liu from Howard Middle School will give you this evening's inspiration.
We, as a human race, have evolved from cavemen who were afraid of fire into an intelligent species of people who live in a very technological world. This is because of the great achievements from the people who thought to be innovators, who thought to think outside the box and to challenge human limitations and abilities. But they all started out as one people, children and students. These students strived to be educationally higher than everyone else and always tried to be the best that they could be. This is what we all should be, the best that we can be inside of education, life, and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. On February 11th, dozens of our middle school students from around the county converged at Maplewood Elementary School to participate in the nationwide math counts competition. The Forest Chapter of the Florida Engineering Society sponsors math counts and Tillman and Associates Engineering do an amazing job at coordinating this event and running this all day. The object of this competition is to solve math equations and word problems accurately in the shortest amount of time. Math counts consist of five timed rounds. There is individual student spirit round without calculators, the individual student target round with calculators, the team round, the fast-paced oral competition called the cipher match, and the countdown round, which ranks the top ten finalists in the oral competition. Teams from Bellevue Middle School, Blessed Trinity, Fort King Middle, Fort McCoy Middle, Howard Academy, Horizon Academy, Lakewood Middle, North Mary Middle, and of course, Osceola Middle participated in this year's event. The top two teams moved to represent Marion County to the state competition held in Orlando. It is time to meet these amazing students and their coaches. The second place team from Marion County is from Osceola Middle School. The team members are Tristan Pank, Alex Dorsey, Sarah McGinley, and Faith Brewerzma. This team placed 40th in the state competition and is coached by Ms. Stacy Buckhalter. Our first place team from Howard Middle School consists of Nikitha Gumati, who is the first place student in our district, Daniel Liu, Taroon Cody, Rishi Patel. This team placed 21st in the state competition. We also have Amelia Armaz and Gabriela Cortez from Howard Middle School who participated as individuals in the state competition. This team is coached by Mrs. Pamela Ernest. Let's give these students and their family a round of applause for their dedication.
Congratulations. We're very proud of you.
So proud of y'all. Love you.
Great job.
So proud.
Thank you.
I recommend approval of the agenda for the April 11th, 2017 school board meeting. With the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official recording of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Sir, move.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Those in favor signify by saying aye, and those that oppose say no.
Still not working.
And the motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 28th, 2017 school board meeting? Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections in the minute? All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those that oppose say no. And the motion passed, five zero. Mrs. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, would like to recognize a new business partner for Greenway Elementary School.
Good evening, Chairperson King, Superintendent, Dr. Mayer, and board members. As always, it's a privilege to address you. So this evening, I'm here to introduce you to some friends, the principal, Luanne Clark from Greenway Elementary School, come on up, Mrs. Clark, and Pastor Frye from Trinity Baptist Church. So some may not consider Trinity Baptist a traditional business partner because some don't think of a church as a business. But they not only are a business partner with Greenway Elementary School, they bring their heart to what they do. And Mrs. Clark has some examples of that that she'll share with you. And being a business partner with one of our schools not only shows that you are making that financial contribution, but most of our partners take that extra step, and this church certainly does that. And in doing that, they not only show that they're a partner, but they show the student and the school family that they truly care about their success. So, Mrs. Clark?
I had a phone call from Joshua Frye, and he said, "I have some backpacks. We have extra backpacks. We haven't been able to give them away. Can you use them?" Well, of course, schools, we don't give away anything. And it is a pleasure to be here to tell you what a great partnership. And thanks to the public foundation, I had a folder that said, "Business Partner." And when he brought the backpacks, we got to talking, and he has such a heart for our community and as we do, and wanting to partner with us. And so I said, "Well, we need a business partner." And he said, "Well, we've kind of talked about that." And I said, "I have just the information for you." So I was able to give him a packet. He left all these backpacks for our students, which was tremendous, so we already felt a connection, and immediately he said, "Yes, we want to be part." And they've partnered with us the Sunday before we came back from spring break about 1:30. There were about 150 people on our school campus. We had, we had, our landscape was about $100, and now it's about $1 million. I mean, they, they put tons and tons of landscaping into our school, their time, they prayer walked, they helped clean up in our teacher's lounge, they were repainting some things on the sidewalk. It was just tremendous to see the people pulling together and just helping and making a difference. We've already talked about backpacks for this year. We're just in constant communication with them. It's just been a wonderful partnership because they're committed to the students at Greenway.
We feel that Greenway does a great job of reaching out to the kids and then to their parents and in the community, and we're just really excited about coming along beside them and helping them reach out better and do all that we can to just support them and just help them just to change kids' lives, but also to change their parents' lives too at the same time.
And to formalize agreement, I have certificates, and one will go in the church office and one at the office at Greenway Elementary. So, thank you again, Pastor Frye, for your service to our community and to our students. And thank you, Mrs. Clark, for having the business partner packet ready to hand out.
May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation recognizing the month of April as Autism Awareness Month?
Sir, move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed, five zero. Mr. Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Coordinator, and Ms. Liz Fields, Director of Exceptional Student Education, please come forward with the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Madam Chair and school board members. I'd like to introduce Norma Barnes. And Norma is an autism spectrum disorder teacher and intensive reading teacher at Westport High School. Although Norma predominantly works with students who have autism, she also works with students with varying exceptionalities. Norma earned her bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of Central Florida, and she holds multiple teaching certifications and endorsements. This is her third year at Westport High School, where she also serves as the advisor for the Wolfpack United, and those are the students that you see here in front of you. This is a peer mentoring program designed to promote inclusion between general education and neurodiverse populations of the school, where the students work together to promote empathy, academics, social skills, and to prepare students with exceptionalities for life after their K-12 education.
Fortunately, I recognize some of these students. Great to have you with us tonight. Let me read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas autism is a complex developmental disability typically appearing during the first three years of life and is estimated to occur in one out of every 68 children and is five times more prevalent in boys than girls, but knows no racial, ethnic, or social boundaries. Whereas autism affects the normal development of the brain in the areas of reasoning, social interaction, and communication skills, and children and adults with autism typically have difficulties in verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and leisure activities. Whereas autism has wide-ranging implications for the entire family of the diagnosed individual, and early diagnosis, research, training, education, and therapy are all vital to reducing the negative effects of autism. Whereas significant progress has been made in the last thirty years in the areas of research, medication, diagnosis, and therapies for autism, resulting in an improved quality of life for individuals living with autism and for their families. Whereas autism is a complex disability requiring research to find a cure and prevention, as well as increased recognition and understanding to ensure individuals with autism are accurately diagnosed and appropriately treated throughout their lives. Autism is the fastest-growing developmental disorder, yet most underfunded. And whereas it is in our interest as a school district and community to recognize achievements in this field and continue these efforts by promoting the awareness and fostering the understanding of autism, now therefore be it resolved that the Marion County School Board and superintendent of schools hereby proclaim the month of April as Autism Awareness Month in Marion County to increase awareness and compassion in our community." And each of you, of course, has signed and dated it this evening. So Liz, on behalf of the board and the superintendent, let me present this to you and everyone associated with the autism spectrum disorder.
Thank you. We have a video clip to share as well?
We do, yeah. That's my other responsibility.
Autism Spectrum Disorder and Autism are both general terms for a group of complex disorders of brain development.
These disorders are characterized in varying degrees by difficulties in social interaction.
Verbal and nonverbal communication.
And repetitive behaviors.
Each individual with autism is unique. Many of those on the autism spectrum have exceptional abilities in visual skills, music, and academic skills.
Autism statistics from the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention identify around one in 88 American childrens on the autism spectrum, a tenfold increase in prevalence in forty years.
An estimated one out of 54 boys and one in 252 girls are diagnosed with autism in the United States.
One in six children have a developmental disability.
Numbers, 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 always numbers. They put us in these small little boxes of numbers and charts, graphs, columns, statistics. They, they cut out the heart. We are no longer people with special needs. We are simply numbers and symptoms of a disease. We are no longer people like them, just another checkmark box with medically sterile idea
We cannot be simplified into numbers and charts. We are not an amalgamation of symptoms. We have minds full of hopes, dreams, desires for love. Yes, it's true. Some of us can't add two plus two. Yes, sometimes it seems like we don't care, but we are here. We are people with minds that won't allow us to make the same connections that they do. That doesn't mean we don't understand, that we don't want to communicate. We are simply just busy seeing the world in circles and arcs and colors so sharp they cut to our hearts. We hear voices and tones and feel them as earthquakes and our minds shake. Perhaps, instead of ignoring them, we're simply trying to keep our footing on this constantly shaking ground.
We are one of them, yet they cover us with labels, retarded, disabled, sick, and diseased. We make them uncomfortable because we don't see just like they do. I see handshakes and metaphors in social cues, and my brain simply rewires them for me. Two doesn't equal two. Two equals 43.6519. And smiles and handshakes don't equal out into a human being, but a series of unintelligible lines, an unfinished drawing of what a self should be. I see happiness and hear beauty, and if that's too much for them simply said, "I am different," but that doesn't mean I can't love them.
They would make me a social butterfly with cognitive, normative wings and a robot heart. I should laugh at the dumb kids in class and pretend to be smart. Be a football player, doctor, be normal, be like them, be like everyone else. Don't be unique, don't be different, because that's safe. That's what works for them, and I can't blame them. But I can't say I don't want to be just like everyone else.
I am special. I am me.
I am autism.
I'd like Ms. Barnes to explain a little bit. Hi, thank you for having us here tonight. That play was written by a Westport graduate by the name of Harry Peralis, and he graduated in 2008, and he wrote that play based on his experiences with his autistic brothers. And so when I was looking for peer mentors from the Westport High School population, Ms. Shelley, the theater director, stepped up and said, "Yes, I want my students to be a part of it." So I've got some, some of my mentors from the theater department here tonight and some of the mentees here also. But that play is a great testimony as to how students excel when you include them in the gen ed population, because in that play, we have students from the theater troupe and we also have students from the autism spectrum disorder unit. So we're taking that play on the road, and we will be at the Hippodrome Theater in Gainesville on Monday, May 8th, for a huge autism awareness event there. But this program has just completely taken off, and I'm just always amazed at how great our students are, because they're always coming in to see me during power hour, and they're saying, "We want to mentor a student, we want to mentor a student." So it's been a great thing to be a part of, and we just are very thankful for your support.
Any comment?
Yeah. One of, one of the words that you said, and it's so important to all of us here, when you said inclusion, when you include all of us in what we do, it makes, make a big difference. And when I think in terms of autism and the fact that when we include our student body and our students involved with it, then it really make a big difference. So congratulations to the students that are participating in the play, because it's something that all of us need to be aware of, and we should be just aware of what is occurring. And the word inclusion really mean a lot. Thank you.
Ms. Stacy?
You know, back at the turn of the century when I was in school, we helped the children who, they didn't really have ESE departments and things. And so we kind of would team up with, if there was somebody that was a little bit slow or reading or something that needed some help, we would sit back and we, we loved to do it. Well, then when my children went through the school system, it kind of wasn't really in vogue so much to do that. So you help children, you help other students and you mentor like one-on-one, is that what they do with other kids or?
Yeah, and we, we serve as students who, with any exceptionality, we don't, we don't discriminate. So autism, you know, Down Syndrome, whatever, we, if there's a need, we'll, we'll find someone to be a mentor. So we match them based on their interests.
That's great, because computer programs and different things, there's nothing like the human touch.
Right.
And from another student that they can look up to.
Right.
And I'm glad that we're working in that direction, and I so appreciate the children because that's such a, just a wonderful virtue to be, you know, just to appreciate the fact that, I want to tell you, I appreciate the fact that you give of your time to help someone else, because it might not do a whole lot for the school, but it's the world to that student. So thank you.
Ms. Stacy, I'm going to ask that, do you pull your mic down lower or speak closer? They are having difficulty hearing you. Ms. McCall?
To the students and the students that were in the play, thank you. That was a very difficult role to play, and you played it very well with passion, with compassion, and, and I thank you because I think to those who don't understand autism and exceptional students, that really will help a lot of people. So thank you. I know that was a difficult role to play, so thank you for doing it.
Well done.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation recognizing the National Day of Remembrance of the Victims of the Holocaust on April 24th, 2017, and support the Days of Holocaust Remembrance local programs, April 23rd through 25th, 2017. May I have a? Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Ms. Boynton. We got ahead. When you go back.
Yeah. Hold on.
Okay. Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those that oppose say no. And the motion passed, five zero. Mayor Kent Gwynn and Ms. Debbie Callahan, Bellevue High School teacher, please come forward and join Mr. Christian for the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
Do you want us? Right here. Okay. You want to say anything before?
No, just, you know, Debbie and I want to thank you for, for doing this and partnering with us. Madam Chair and Superintendent Mayor and board members, we want to thank you all for, for doing this with us. This is what, our fourth year we've done this?
This is year three.
Year three, okay. It seems like four. But, but it's been good, and it's gotten a lot of good response in the community, and I'm sure this year with your help, we'll get the message out even more. And so we thank you for, for doing this. I mentioned the other night at council meeting that we are doing this, and they were excited that we're partnering together to do this. So thank you. It wouldn't be possible without this lady.
You want to say anything?
I would just also like to thank you so much for getting involved. This project has meant the world to me. It's been wonderful working with Mayor Gwynn to try to keep the memories alive. I work with survivors, and they speak until the day that they just can't speak anymore. Their number one fear is that people are going to forget that this happened to them. They're going to believe the deniers and the revisionists, and they're terrified that when they go, their stories are going with them. And with what you all are doing here, you're assuring that their stories will live on long after they do. So I thank you very much for that.
All right, let me, stay up here. Don't leave yet. Let me read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas pursuant to an act of Congress, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council has designated April 23rd through 25th, 2017 as days of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust. Whereas the history of the Holocaust provides the opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments and their efforts to overcome prejudice through education and reflection. Whereas we remember with sadness the over six million European Jews and millions of other innocent men, women, and children who were victims of Hitler's Final Solution. We remember with admiration the resistors and rescuers, known and unknown, who risked and lost their lives to save others. And we remember with respect the survivors who were sheltered, who escaped, or who were freed and who lived to contribute so much to our community and our world. And whereas we have an obligation to ensure that the memory and legacy of lives lost or forever changed in this horrific event are never forgotten. Therefore, be it resolved that we hereby declare this date as Yom Hashoah Remembrance Day in our community and acknowledge Monday, April 24th, 2017, in remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust. Further be it resolved that we pledge today to firmly commit ourselves to say 'never again,' and that's in all caps, and to work to promote human dignity by confronting intolerance and hate whenever and wherever it occurs." And each of you has signed and dated it today. So on behalf of the board and the superintendent mayor?
Thank you.
Present this to you, and Debbie, to you as well. Thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Ms. Stacy has a comment?
Y'all like to say anything?
I would like to say thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Debbie. I have followed these two people as they have, uh, I've been to their programs, and and Debbie and I have spoken back and forth about the different things that she's done, and the work that she's put into this, and the work, and, and the mayor coming to the, the meetings, and sometimes not that many people in the community knew about it, but the people that were there really enjoyed it, and hearing the stories of the survivors, where they actually talked about, um, you know, if they were fortunate enough to get a little bit of meat or something, if they did a special deed for, they were like, uh, picked out to be a little worker in the, in the camp, and so they would get a little extra food, and they would take the food back and share it with the people that were there, and they were all so thin and so hungry, and they would take the little bit of food they got and share it. To hear those survivors talking about this, I mean, this is, it's pretty unbelievable. And now we have atrocities across the world right now, and this is a great time to bring this back, because if we don't talk about the past, it will be forgotten, and it will be repeated. And so thank you, Debbie, for bringing it alive. Um, I don't think anyone realizes, but a handful of people, how much work you and the mayor together have worked on. And, and Debbie, uh, you're just amazing to be a teacher and take the time that you do. And I've been in your office, at your home, watching you put this together. And, um, and we owe her a lot of thanks, and if there's any way we can keep this program compiled and, and even grow it bigger, um, even if Debbie's not here, you know, and we need to put something together, because we get wonderful things going, and then the person, you know, retires or something happens, and the program goes away. And this is one that we have got to get a hold of, and we've got to somehow, you know, get it recorded and get these people recorded talking, so we can show students in their history classes or something. But let's work hard to make that happen. Mr. Christian, let's work on that. Thank you.
I have some news to share, I'll actually, I'll ask Suzanne to come up. Come on up. You give me that look, what are you talking about? Suzanne has been working with Debbie and with the mayor. Uh, we have a flyer that we'd like to share with you guys that shares information about this year's events. We'll, of course, make that flyer available to the community as well. And I don't want to spill the beans, but you're sticking with us for how long?
Well, forever, virtually perhaps. But, um, chances are pretty good I will be moving out of the state coming up shortly, after this school year.
With that as the catalyst, the Superintendent has directed us to kind of take ownership of this program with the mayor and the city, so that virtually guarantees, Mrs. Stacy, what you said, that this will continue in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. James?
Been a, been a history buff, and I know that we, we, we have worked in the past with storytellers, and we talk with the veterans quite a bit, and I remember working with the Tuskegee Airmen. And one of the things that we talked about was making sure that we record our stories when they talk with you all, if we could record that. And it just so happened tonight is, I, I know we have a proclamation for our libraries, recognizing our library. And to me, I, I would like to try and have a uniform effort to recognize our veterans, recognize our Holocaust victims, and put it in our libraries, because I think this is the way that we can keep this, uh, going forever. I know, and I haven't seen what we've done with the Tuskegee Airmen, but that was one of the, I know we had some that lived here, and I don't, I don't know where their story is at this point, but this would be an excellent opportunity to make the connection between our media centers and our history that we, that we want to preserve. So if we could work our way in terms of doing that, I think we would, I think we would have a treasure that would be well preserved. Thank you.
That is an excellent idea. Do you have any comment?
No.
No, I, I also wanted to, um, express my gratitude that you are teaching our students. I've actually had the opportunity to visit Dachau, and when you're there and you see it and feel it is one thing, but when you have the storytellers or people that have actually lived it come and share with our students, so they, they can, you know, experience it through them, you know, um, it's just very instrumental to make sure that we never do forget, and that never happens again. So, thank you, and good luck in your new adventure, and we appreciate you, um, leaving it, your hard work and dedication here for us to continue on. And also, Dr. Mayor had something to say, I forgot, sorry.
Our commitment to you and the survivors is we won't forget. You know what that means.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck to you, we will miss you. Kevin didn't sit.
May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation recognizing the month of April as School Library Month?
So move.
Moved by Ms. McCall, and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? See and none. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those that oppose, say no. We're keeping you busy tonight, Mr. Christian. And the motion passed five-zero. Will the following people please join Mr. Christian at the podium for the reading and presentation of this proclamation? Megan Lizzito, Crystal Sizemore, Ms. Terry Adams, Debbie Pace, Samantha Roberts, and Jennifer Thomas.
I recognize many of these folks for Golden Apple reasons and for student media festival reasons, which I know we're going to talk about later. Let me read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas library programs ensure that all students and staff are effective users of ideas and information. Whereas the school librarian's role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure the library program is an integral part of the instructional program of the school. Whereas the Board of Education has entrusted the library specialists in each school to teach the skills of locating, evaluating, and using information found in traditional resources and new technologies, to provide literature appreciation activities, and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading for every student. Whereas lifelong learning begins and is systematically developed through the library curriculum of the elementary and secondary schools. Whereas the library program contributes to the individual growth and development of all students, while fostering both excellence and equity in education. And whereas the school librarians of Marion County have dedicated themselves to work for quality library programs for all students. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of Marion County Schools does hereby proclaim April two thousand seventeen as School Library Month in all of the public schools of Marion County, and calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Marion County to recognize and support this action, and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month." So, Ms. Lizzito, I'm going to present this to you on behalf of all of these and dozens of other media specialists throughout the district.
And we just wanted to thank you all, thank you, Ms. King, Dr. Mayor, and just have a great team. This is representative of our elementary, middle, and sec- and high school librarians, and they do do a fabulous job every single day. And, you know, a lot of people say, oh, why do you need the library? I can just Google it, and, you know, they, they have to be, they, that library. And really, Crystal has done a great job this year of making that library be the center, and really trying to advocate for them being the center of the school, and really being a resource to help our teachers. You know, if you're working on this unit, hey, I, hey, I've got these extra books, have you tried this? And just done a really good job, and, and this is some of the best people that I get to work with every day. So thank you very much for your support.
Oh, sorry, Mr. James?
Hey ladies, y'all can't get away with that.
I didn't, I didn't see Mr. James.
Y'all come back up here, y'all can't get away with that easy now. You know, it's always, it's always important for us to recognize the media center and the people that make up the media center. And again, I, I've said this a thousand times, books and things are just books, but when you have the media specialists in there in the library, y'all make this thing come alive. And I know, been an old person around the school system for a long time. The media center is usually your hub of your school, because at some point, every student will pass through your media center, and you all will touch him. You're just as important as the cafeteria, I just want y'all to know. And I, and I just felt, I just felt that we, I, I, I had to say something to you ladies, because I recognize the fact that this is really an important part of our media center. And by the referendum vote, I'm sure the community recognized this as well. So thank you for a job well done, and pass it on to your colleagues. Thank you.
You guys are, he's, Mr. James says the hub, I say the heart of the school. I mean, that's where everything is happening. Um, whenever students need any type of information, whether it be research or projects or whatever, they head to you guys, and you guys are, maybe you're not teaching math and science, but you are teaching them how to find that information, and you know these students when they come in, you know, and, um, that says a lot. And again, our community also thanks you guys, because, um, you know, they voted in that referendum tax, and they understand the importance of you and your position, so thank you.
And you show them how to love reading. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will now ask the Board's, uh, School Board Attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. King. In compliance with Florida's Government in the Sunshine Law, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a topic relating to the operation of the school district. These uniform procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity, to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table near the door to this room. Public speaker forms are also located on the table. As Mrs. King said earlier, the completed forms were due to the School Board's assistant no later than five forty P M. Tonight's speakers will be called by the Board Chair in the order of receipt. If you do wish to speak before you begin, please state your full name and address, and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time. Everyone in the room tonight must conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Please refrain from verbal attacks, slanderous statements, and profanity, of course. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To protect student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and their families is strictly prohibited. And Madam Chair, I'll send it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Suzanne, do we have any speakers?
We do. Julia Slauter?
Julia Melanie Slauter, four-five-two-five Southeast Twelfth Avenue, Ocala, Florida, S.L.A.U.G.H.T.E.R. Good evening, I am here on behalf of the administrative team at Howard Middle School and Dr. N H Jones Elementary School to ask the Board and the Superintendent to not move my administrative team. I understand that a lot of changes are going to happen with the new administration, but Ms. Gary, Ms. Kemp, who are the principal and vice principal at Dr. N H Jones Elementary School, have done an outstanding job since they have been placed there. My children were very apprehensive to have a new principal and a new vice principal. The first day of school, they were very nervous going to school. I pull up, Ms. Gary, Ms. Kemp are in the front car line greeting the students with Thing One and Thing Two shirts on. And my son said, that is awesome. And since they have been there, it has been awesome for my children. They, everybody that they've hired, Ms. Hitchcock, our science teacher, has done an outstanding job. Ms. Jimenez has done an outstanding job. She made a maker space. The, Ms. Hitchcock did penny wars with our kids, raised seven thousand dollars for the science lab. She got somebody to donate three thousand dollars for a weather center for our school. My, Ms. Justin took over halfway through my third grade son's year, because the, his previous teacher had a death in the family. She hit the ground running, Ms. Justin hit the ground running, did an outstanding job. My child was not affected hardly at all because of that. With regards to Mr. Hensel at Howard Middle School, he has done an outstanding job at getting robotics going there, and doing a lot of things to help my son adjust his sixth grade year at Howard Middle School. So I would ask the Board to reward excellence, which these administrative teams are, and leave them at this school. I think the reason why Ms. Els- Ellsperman was principal of the year is because she was allowed to spend a prolonged period of time at Westport, develop programs at Westport, have the parents, like our parents have at my two schools, the teachers at my two schools, and most importantly, the students at my two schools buy into what they're doing. And they are continuing to improve the school year after year after year. Mr. Raymond, who's in the room today, was allowed to stay at Dr. N H Jones for a long period of time. He did major changes at that school, developed innovative programs at that school, because he was allowed to stay. Would Ms. Ellsperman have been principal of the year in the nation, had she been moved every couple of years? I say no. Would Mr. Raymond have been able to do the things he did at Dr. N H Jones? If he had been moved every couple of years to a different school, I tell you, no, that would not have happened. So I know that you have a lot of difficult decisions, Dr. Mayor, and I appreciate the fact that you've been out in the community to talk to us. I want to give you the same respect you've given the parents in the community, and do the same thing for you, because I don't want to come back in two or three weeks and complain about things, not having told you this is what I want to do on behalf of my children and my school. So I would ask you to consider carefully what you're going to do in the next couple of weeks, and I'm here for my principals, as they are here for me. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? May I have a motion to adopt the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen Code of Student Conduct?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. McCall. Dr. Mayor?
The Code of Student Conduct is required to be updated and approved by the Board on an annual basis per Florida Statute one zero zero six point zero seven. Two work sessions were held with Board members to review the recommended changes.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the Code of Student Conduct? Board members, any discussion? Okay, see and none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, C nine point one dash C one eight point one, as submitted? Moved by Ms. McCall, and seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the motion passed five-zero. May I have a motion to schedule a public hearing for the May ninth, two thousand seventeen Board Meeting for the purpose of approving revisions to Board Policy four point two-one instructional materials?
So move.
Moved by Ms. McCall, and seconded by Mr. James, I believe.
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Dr. Mayor, you wanted to share with the public the new process upon the adoption of the revisions to Board Policy four point two-one. On May ninth, the district will be using textbook adoption.
Correct. As we move forward with this new venture, being one of, if not the, first school district to choose our own textbooks, it's very important to us to keep you all informed of every detail. So where tonight, uh, could informed of every detail. So, where tonight could have been placed on consent agenda, where you're just agreeing that we can move forward with a hearing, I thought it was important that we update you on the details thus far. So, as I told both Ms. Lucido and Ms. Sizmar that I sleep well at night, knowing that they are in charge of this. So, I think that you'll be pleased with their presentation and the detail they're putting into it.
Oh, good evening again. We are back again. And we just wanted, like Dr. Mayor said, to give you a quick update. If you remember, the last time we were together was March 9th, and we presented our revised policy 4.21, our updates that we were proposing. And at that time, we were really excited to be able to move Marion County into this new territory where we will be the first district in the state to create our own process for selecting instructional materials independent of the current state process. And so, we're still very excited about that and we don't vote until May 9th. And that seems so, like such a long time to see you all again. So, we wanted to give you a quick update on some of the things that we've been working on. And Crystal's going to begin by just reminding you a few of the key highlights.
Good evening. Like Megan mentioned, our revised policy increases the district's flexibility and control over the instruction materials we use in our classrooms. State statute 1006.283 gives school districts the authority to implement their own instructional materials plan, and in doing so, provides the district with the ability to deviate from certain mandates of the state. Our revised policy 4.21 complies with the requirements necessary to have this increased flexibility, and by implementing our own plan, we will no longer be required to use the state adopted bid list. Our revised policy also establishes that public members to our review committee are chosen by school board recommendation, and it also allows the district to create and follow its own adoption cycle. And the increased flexibility allows the district to choose instructional materials best suited for Marion County public school students on a timeline tailored to district needs.
And so, remember again, we pointed out that this new policy involves more than just our instructional materials department, but it's going to involve finance and technology and getting together all of those people. And so, under the direction of Dr. Hamm, we've begun having some planning meetings and he's really led us, and we've had members of those departments to try to work out what that process is going to look like. And we're having another meeting this week with members of curriculum and instruction so we can make sure that we have all of the people at the table who need to be there. And the other part that's very exciting is because, again, we're not using the state bid list, we're going to be able to negotiate our own contracts and we can add our own language into those contracts. And so, we are looking toward a potential third-party vendor who can help us with that bidding and advertising and negotiating that contract, you know, because, and they have that relationship with those textbook companies and can help facilitate that process for us.
So, next steps, they include partnering with stakeholders to create our adoption cycle. For example, with ELA-K5 as a district focus, we can choose to reevaluate those instructional materials used in the courses. Under the state-led process, we would not have that ability until 2019. So, with our new process, the possibilities are endless, and we are tentatively looking at secondary social studies, secondary science, and elementary English Language Arts for adoptions.
Any questions?
Mr. James.
Okay, now, Dr. Hamm, just, okay, now, you will be dealing with the, the budget portion of it in terms of dollars and cents. And Dr. Grantham, you'll be dealing with the curriculum portion of this. Is this what I'm hearing? Okay.
Thank you for that question. And it is an intricate balance between the two deputy superintendents on this, but I need to mention, we couldn't do it without the expertise that these two young ladies have brought into the equation because we're the new guys on the block and they have been dealing with the textbook issues and instructional materials for some time. There are really two phases to this. The first phase is for us to meet as a staff and determine what are the characteristics of the types of materials and the ancillary materials that we'd like to have in any of the selections. Because once we do that, then we can prepare a request for proposals to go out that meet those criteria. When we do that, the vendors who wish to participate actually pay a fee to have their materials examined by the district. Currently, those vendors pay a fee to the state of Florida to play in the big game. As we become an independent selector of instructional materials, they would pay that fee to Marion County Public Schools, which gives us the ability to offset the cost of bringing in community members and staff to then broker the selections in each of the areas that were presented to you. So, from a financial standpoint, it advantages the district. We also have an agreement, and this is in statute, that we have to get the lowest price that that vendor makes available for the particular product. So, it guarantees that we don't lose anything by being a smaller consumer competing against the state who is the large consumer. In other words, if they get a great price, we're going to get that as well. If Harcourt Brace Jovanovic has a good price on a textbook in Texas, we're going to get that great price here. It's a win-win for us. What it does do is bring local control back to you, the board, as, as you, through your superintendent, are selecting materials to be used locally. That's a great degree of flexibility.
One of the things that, that I'm more concerned about is making sure that this is aligned with what we're trying to do. Now, this, this is important. I can understand the dollars and cents where you guys are going. But one of the things that I think we've had some problems in the past where we were not aligned.
Yep.
Okay, now, and this is what my concern is right now. And see, Dr. Wether, you know it or not, I'd rather see you up there as well because I want to see the thing aligned with what we, what we're trying to do here. And that's, that's what my concern is, that we start going all over the place and we don't get out of line with this stuff. And we save a dollar.
Mr. James, uh, so, when we're talking about processes now, getting the, the plan in place, getting the RFPs ready, then we get the, the request proposal, come to us and we'll have our curriculum folks look at it and pay attention to it. There are some current textbooks that Florida uses now that aren't aligned to the standards that's already adopted. That doesn't make sense to me. So, what you're talking about is actually happening right this second. So, we're going to get the processes set up and then we're going, the curriculum instruction folks are going to go through, and we're going to have the social studies people all come in and pay attention. So, the first question we'll ask is, are we aligned? Are we teaching what we're supposed to be teaching? And if your textbook can't do that, we got to have conversations. So, there will be lots of conversations from, from our side of the house with, with teachers, with administrators about the curriculum that we're doing and the standards that we're teaching and making sure that textbook can give us what we're asking for, not doing what we're told to do. So, yes, sir, it's two-step process.
Ms. Stacy?
And what is most exciting about this to me, to tell the community, is that in the past, in other districts in the state, basically, the books that are approved at the state level, often it comes down to who's the biggest lobbyist. Not what's the quality of the book, but who the biggest lobbyist is. And who, who has the most power over the Department of Education through their lobbying and through their, the education committees and everything. And we will be able to get out of that trap, and we will be able to buy our books based upon the quality of the content, not which lobbyist could talk the longest and get the most favors as to the books. So, our curriculum will be driven by content quality, not corporate cronyism. So, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Mayor, for allowing us to step out of the box and do something that no other district has tried. We've been allowed, state statute has allowed it. And Dr. Mayor and her leadership team, I want the community to know, has stepped out of a box that no one has stepped out of because the lobbyists have so much power and the school boards just tend to take the path of least resistance, the easy way. Here's a list, here's what we got. Okay, we know it's not that great, but anyway, this is the easy way to do it. This makes a lot of extra work for our employees. This is not something that's going to be, um, a rubber-stamp thing like in the past. This is going to take some community involvement. And I want to, to praise Dr. Mayor and her team for allowing us to do something that I always dreamed that we could do, but everybody told us we couldn't do it. So, thank you. This is my dream come true, that we can get quality books from wherever we want to buy them. And we can tell the corporate cronyism, y'all go play somewhere else. So, thank you.
If I may make two observations. Uh, as recently as last week, the legislature amended the statute that governs this process, and in doing so, enhanced the community involvement piece of the reviews that we'll be doing locally. So, they, they have recognized this as well.
And I'd like to say one more thing because we're talking. And we have someone in our audience, Mr. Ed Wilson. Um, I was up there when this bill was, um, before the Senate. And I listened to Ed Wilson and others in an organization, I believe he was the only person from our county that was speaking on the textbook. And I was able to wave in favor with them while they were there for this, um, for this new statute. And I remember the shock on everyone's face when the Senate, it just flew through the Senate. And that was our concern because we felt we could get it through the House, but the Senate's a little bit different. And so, I remember when they passed it, remember Ed? We're like, it really happened. And so, um, it was just amazing. But it probably wouldn't have happened had there hadn't been community involvement, like people like Mr. Ed Wilson, that took his time. He got no, no travel time or anything. Nobody paid him to go and do what we need because he has grandchildren in this community. And he did it for his and our grandchildren. So, we owe him. Thank you. I watched it.
The last thing I wanted to mention is, I talked about these two ladies and what they've done in this process. Uh, and, and Megan Lucido is probably going to blush if I say this, but she has been selected to be the next principal at Blessed Trinity, and we're going to lose her as an asset in the district. And I bring that up for two reasons. One, to indicate that this is a, a school system with 6,000 employees. Uh, people move up, people get additional responsibilities, assistant principals become principals, principals become directors of activities. And, and you heard tonight a plea to leave some staff in place, but you have to understand that this is a complex organization and we always want to leverage the experts that we have in an area and put them in a position where they can influence the most young lives and do, do the best that they can for our district. And, and that will always be the case. And it's not unique to a school system or a military brigade or a company in the private sector. It happens.
Okay. Well, with no further discussion, we're going to vote on, uh, to schedule a public hearing for the May 9th, 2017 board meeting for the purpose of approving revisions to Board Policy 4.21 instructional materials. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those that oppose, say no. And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the Curriculum Associates LLC data sharing consent form? Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Dr. Mayor, you also wanted to share information regarding the sharing of certain student data with Performance Matters.
Because the sharing of student data is such a, such a sensitive topic, and we respect that, and we know that you'll have concerns, we didn't want this on the consent agenda. We wanted Dr. Grantham to do a brief presentation and allow you to ask questions as you feel necessary.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and Vice Chair and Board Members. Uh, Dr. Mayor and Mr. Lake, uh, we're trying to, to simplify this. We have, we currently have a few things going on with our data. I remember we talked about our student assessment data and we had conversations previously, Mrs. King, about sharing the student data. We want to make sure that this was very clear. So, to be transparent, I'm going to try to just go step by step so we understand what this is that we're doing. Currently, in our schools and our top schools, we're using iReady. iReady is a diagnostic tool that kind of is a predictor for student achievement and success based off the standards. Uh, we have, uh, in our school, we have Performance Matters, which uses our true north logic and helps us evaluate our teachers and gets things calculated for VAM. We don't have anything that can talk between iReady and put it in one spot. So, what we're trying to do is take the iReady data that we're using for our DOE top schools. This shares the data with what we're already sharing our data with within our schools to put it in one place where we can all see it. Versus, here's one software system, here's another software system, we're going back and forth comparing it. This takes and places it in one specific spot so that it's a, it's a compilation of all the data. So, a principal or a district person or a teacher can go through and see how, how it relates. So, the, the two places we're using, we use it for a diagnostic for math in iReady and for reading in iReady. It's going to take all that data, share it with ourselves, not outside entities, so we can see it as one big, in one spot. So, that's what this is. It's not going to another district or going anywhere else. It's coming back to us just in one placeholder so we can compare apples to apples is what this is.
Any discussion?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. We're getting clear. Thank you. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that has a total value of $25,110? $2,500 to Denellin Elementary School from their business partner, Forsight Construction Group, Inc., via Public Education Foundation. $1,000 to Forest High School from City of Ocala. $2,500 to Fort McCoy School from their business partner, Adena Springs, via the Public Education Foundation. $3,420 to Fort McCoy School from Cactus Jacks II Incorporated. $5,000 to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from the Public Education Foundation for the mini grant Monroe Regional Hospital Grant. $2,000 to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from the Public Education Foundation for the mini grant Growing the Future at AT&amp;T Summit Work. $2,650 to Lake Weir High School from their business partner, Lockheed Martin Corporation, via the Public Education Foundation. $1,040 to North Marion High School from One Blood, Inc. $5,000 to Vanguard High School from the Board of County Commissioners. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And those that oppose, say no. Okay, great. And the motion passed 5-0. Mr. James, would you like to thank our donors?
I always like to thank people that's donating money to our school system and especially to our schools. And I'd just like to remind, uh, the people out there that when we usually get a donation, it's usually for a specific purpose at that particular school and it's usually clearly defined. So, again, on behalf of all the schools and all the kids that it will touch, thanks. And it's always, we appreciate it. And if someone else out there that want to give to us, we'd be more than happy to put it in a place where we can do the most good. Thank you.
Thank you. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, April 20th, 2017 at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is for annual review of the health insurance fiscal year 2017 and impact fee indexing calc, calculation, as well as to receive updates on expanding career and technical education and the University of South Carolina grant for PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. All right. So, we're going to move along to our board members' concerns or comments. And we will begin with, Mr. James, you are the lucky guy today.
I'm always, always have something to say, but one of the best things that I'm going to say to you is we're getting ready to close our school year. And I would really like for our seniors and especially our guidance counselors to really start looking around and making sure that every kid that come out of a Marion County Public School have an opportunity to, to apply for scholarships or be on, on task to, to find out about different schools that they're interested in. The clock is ticking on us and it's important that we do that. I talked with, uh, Leona about the Milling Foundation and to make sure all of our students that are interested in I talked with Leona about the Milling Foundation and to make sure all of our students that are interested in going to the University of Florida, they are aware of that foundation, even though it is a low-interest loan or whatever, but it's, it's there. And it's, it's there for our students. And again, I'd just like to share with the board, I, as most of you know, I've had a little eye problems and things like that. And that was one of the reasons I was not in Tallahassee, because, hey, you can't get around that city if you can't see. So that's one of the things. So I'll be going into the night with a couple more weeks up. That's what's been slowing me down a little bit. So I wanted you guys to know I, I am not, how can I say that? I'm not, in other words, I'm not skipping out on you, in other words. I'll get there. Thank you.
Ms. Stacy?
I want to touch on two things. And while we're talking about Tallahassee, I'd like to talk about some things that the board, that I'm the executive, on the Executive Board for State School Board Association. And we followed and worked hard to support the Religious Freedom Act. And so that has now passed the, the House and the Senate. And it will become a statute and law here when the governor signs it. And that will give all clubs, religious clubs, the same consideration. I want the public to know, as the drama club, fair representation to all clubs that are meeting after school. And they can be announced and advertised, just like any other club that's in the school. So that, so, because some children, you know, they're religious clubs, that's important to them. And often they leave to private schools because the, the constitution has been twisted and twisted so where things are, we've been doing things that wasn't, we've been protecting ourselves so much that we've actually been stepping on the toes of religious freedom. So I'm very happy that Dennis Baxley, our local state senator, has led this, led this to the people in Florida. And so I'm proud that I know him, and I have thanked him, and I wish others that support this would do the same. This is the end of the year. We are coming on to the proms and all the different things. And I did sign on to the code of conduct, but we had a little consideration that I agreed to sign on if the administration would make some announcements before prom and some of the big events and things about our zero tolerance policy on alcohol and different things. And I want to remind the administration, I will be watching, I will be calling the schools to make sure this happened. And most of you know me, I'm not gonna drop it. So I want the children to be warned, I don't want to set our students up for failure, because so many of those students didn't read the code of conduct, even though they said they read them, so I mean, I, I can read it and this, and this stuff. But I want to make sure our administration, Dr. Mayor, understands, I am very, very serious about this. That we will, over the loudspeaker, we will remind the students at different times of the day, coming up to prom, the consequences of alcohol at the prom and at some of these ballgames and things. So that we don't have students at the end of the year being expelled for some silly thing that they did that causes them to lose scholarships in college and different things, because they can't now graduate, they're expelled. So thank you for listening to my rant about that. But I've been ranting about that for two years, and I'm glad we now have an administration that hears my rant. Thank you, Dr. Mayor.
Ms. Boynton?
Thank you. I was in Tallahassee, and some information that I, that I was there listening to was on the, that we have now some the education trends for other governors. And so I, as I looked at that, excuse me, I began to understand, just like we were doing with our school finance, all, all of the governors are doing that. And most of them, the other thing they were going was our teachers for the issues that we have here. So I, I brought back, if anybody wanted to see that, you can. Also, as I was talking to Mr. James, we have a new information now and then and now on the school secretary.
Segregation.
Thank you. Thank you. It's getting better, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. But this was something that I, if someone wanted to look at this too. This was very good for, for our children and for our teachers or our parents to look and say, there now. And say, well, I think we're done doing so much better with our students, you know, as, as we looked again on those things. So I was looking at those things. And there was one other thing that I looked at, and I'm sure you all probably did, when we're looking at for this Senator, Fon Vo, excuse me, Ford, Ford, and that's SB 964. If we, I know they put it down just a little bit. If you just looked at, this is SB 964. This is something that is really, we need, need to look at as of our teachers. I mean, everyone should, especially as a school board, to look at our legislatures and look. This is something we really looked at. There's some different changes on it that were, that they're working about, that they were working, making sure. Could you hear me there? That we were, that we were changing. So I'm gonna pass this down to, because this is what we need to do, okay? Thank you.
Ms. McCall?
Thank you. Had the privilege of presenting with several of the ones in the room at the Media Festival. And Mr. Christian, let me just congratulate you and those that helped organize that. It was a long night, but it was a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful night. And I appreciated so much being asked. We have the entries, how many entries total?
344 this year, from 30 different schools.
It, it was just fabulous. And what I loved about it, when we first started this, I remember that Dr. N.H. Jones and Vanguard.
Dominated.
Totally dominated. And I felt so bad for the other schools that had worked so hard. But now, we have so many wonderful video production teachers in our schools. And I, it was across the board. There were representations and winners from everywhere. So thank you. It was a fun night. We had superheroes. My grandson was there and got an award. I was so excited for him. So it was just, it was really fabulous. Thank you.
I appreciate the kind words, and I would be remiss if I didn't recognize my production team. But as well, Megan Lassito, Crystal Sizmar, and their team, because they're, they've escaped the room as we speak. But they were phenomenal. They took everything from accepting the video entries up to Friday night. That part of the equation. And it's, you can imagine the logistics with 344 entries. Some entries have one student, some entries have 20 students attached to them. Every student who participated received a certificate. So even, even though they didn't win first place, they submitted that video, they got that certificate. Dr. Mayor has some numbers she'll share later on, but 16 years in a row, we've been able to do this. And we, we don't use tax dollars to do this. This is privately funded from our community. So kudos to those partners, and they know who they are.
It was, it was really fabulous.
Thank you.
I believe one of the ones, I think it was maybe the 5th grade, the World War II, the Dr. N.H. Jones, where they had done it with Legos and a history lesson. They were all amazing, but that one was really amazing.
Perseverance and patience.
Yeah, that was just amazing. So thank you, thank you. Also, last night, I had the privilege with also several others, Dr. Hamm, Ms. Boston Ellis, Mr. Viennello. We were at Bellevue High School for the senior capstone presentations. The seniors, and I remember when my son Matthew was there in '98, '99, Mr. Viennello, he graduated in 2000, where Mr. Yancy had taken this idea and had every senior begin to look at a career track. And through their senior year, they had to research, they had to determine what the salary levels were, they had to come up with a project, and at the end, they had to do a presentation. And some of them thought they wanted to do careers when they started out, but they really found out they didn't want to do that, which was very much the case last night. And it was just wonderful. We listened to presentations and scored the young people. And I just have to say, we, I think that the future is in very good hands. I saw some wonderful students last night, very good presentations. And I know so often we hear so much about the bad, but after the Media Festival, after last night, I really think there's so much more good in our students. We just don't talk about it enough. So thank you to all the students. And one last thing, especially to our seniors. Seniors, it's that time of year. I've had three seniors go graduate, and it was always a trying time for mom and dad. You, you think you're invincible, but you're not. Please be careful, please use your heads, please follow the code of conduct, stay safe. We want you to come back to Marion County, work in Marion County. We want to send you off to college, we want to send you off to the military, but we want you to stay safe this time of year.
Dr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mrs. King. As Kevin mentioned about the Media Festival, and Ms. McCall, it was great to see you there. There were 344 student entries this year. And in prizes, we gave away $4,000 in best of show prizes. And that was Denellen Elementary, Dr. N.H. Jones, Howard Middle, and Vanguard High. There were 46 first-place videos that now will advance to regionals. So that's incredible. And like you said, it was inspiring, and, and I agree that our future is in very good hands. A reminder to all of our families and to our board that this Friday, April 14th, is a full day of school for students. It's a weather makeup day. And again, Kevin got a Sky Alert message out earlier this evening to remind everybody. And that was making up, this Friday will make up for the September 2nd closing, when we had the hurricane day. Another reminder that Friday, May 26th, will be our last day of school, and that one will make up for the October 7th Hurricane Day. So just some reminders there. As you mentioned, Ms. McCall, that it is the end of the school year, and that as we move forward, we know that 97.1% of all of our students make the right choices every day. And we're very proud of all of you. And in recent years, less than a half of 1%, and Dr. Hamm ran these numbers for us, so we know that they are, are correct. Less than half of 1%, which is .005 of all of our students, are making decisions that, that are not correct. But unfortunately, they're the ones that get the media attention. And I know that there's, was a little bit of concern last week as we moved into the portion of our meeting that comes after this with expulsions. But please keep that in mind, that it really is, out of our 42,000-plus students, less than half of 1% are showing up as making incorrect decisions. So we are proud of our students for following, following what is right, making those good choices. But I do need to share about a, a choice that a student made a few weeks ago. At Westport High, there was a social media threat that was put on Facebook that disrupted not only the school day, but disrupted our district from top to bottom. There were 12 people involved from school and district levels, and it, we had to divert over 40 hours of combined labor time to address this one social media threat. Again, we ran the numbers, and it was almost $1,500 that we had to divert from funds into just looking into this one particular incident. We take every incident seriously. We are not playing with this. If you choose to put a threat on social media, it will be addressed, and it will be addressed seriously. As we worked with the Ocala Police Department to move forward to arrest this student, again, we ran these numbers. And the money that we had to divert from taxpayer funds would have bought six Chromebooks for students, would have given a 1% cost of living allowance to 10 paraprofessionals to keep up with inflation, would have bought 509 reams of copy paper. So that's it in a monetary, in a monetary view. But again, we had almost 24% absentee rate at that school that day, because students were afraid to come to school. Parents were afraid, even though we had diverted extra manpower to that school to make sure everybody was safe. And it's, it's simply unacceptable. It's unacceptable, and will be dealt with as such. But moving forward, again, we're gonna go back to the fact that less than one half of 1% of students are making these, these poor choices. And as we move forward in this week of celebration, I want to wish, wish everybody a glorious Easter in regards for a happy Passover. I want to thank Officer Berry for joining us tonight from the OPD. He's filling in for our friend Officer Hunt, who's on, I guess, maternity, we could tell maternity leave, right? But Officer Berry, thanks for being with us tonight. I told you to be calm, everything would be good, but we really appreciate you being here. And tonight's, tonight's book is The Once and Future King. And this is the book by T.H. White that The Musical Camelot was based upon. And, but remember, students, it's always a book first, okay? So The Musical Camelot, that was then turned into a movie as well, a great musical. But it's a story of King Arthur. And that legend goes that a young boy, his nickname was Wart, came, came across a sword and a stone. And when he was able to pull the sword out of the stone, the crowds gathered, and they, you are our king. You are the king of England, you are King Arthur. Well, after King Arthur takes over, and he builds his excellent team around the round table, and brings all the knights in, and they start great discussions, he begins to ponder. And the great question that he ponders in the book, and, which is also a significant point in the musical, is whether it should be might is right, or might for right. And I think that's something that I am so honored to be working with all of you with, because I think that we have, have made that turn. And it's no longer that might is right, but it's might for right. And I'm honored to work with all of you. And again, I wish you an awesome Easter and a great springtime.
All right. Mr. Lake, I went right past you.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, good. Ms. Shirley?
Shirley? I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Well, I don't know, I know at least one of us didn't know, but this past weekend was Dr. Mayor's birthday.
Oh, good grief.
So I would like to acknowledge your birthday, and just tell you happy birthday. It's, it's a Betty cake.
Thank you.
And it has the little pink pearl on top. And on behalf of the board, we are so glad you were born.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I'll enjoy that.
Yeah. And then, Mr. James, we did miss you in Tallahassee, and your eyes are important. And you probably don't remember this, but last year, or maybe the year before, when we were up there, the light that would say the walk sign would go. And I was like, look, the light is, you know, telling us why we could go. And you go, don't ever look at the light, you watch the cars. So you knew that your eyes needed to be able to see those cars as we're walking. But he said it much funnier than I did, but it just stuck out to me when you said that. And also, I want to discuss Tallahassee a little bit, but not necessarily that we were busy meeting our senators and legislators. But I want to acknowledge Ms. McCall, because you are very modest. And I'm not sure we're aware, but Ms. McCall's son, Matthew, who is a Bellevue graduate, is now the head coach for UMass. And she's a proud mama. This is exciting. I, I will never forget that day. And I'm not sure I remember what we were up there talking about. Well, I'll never forget us sitting up there, and you're like, Matthew just found out, and he's press, really, and it was a lot of fun. And I know you're proud, and we're all very proud of him.
We have to buy winter clothes now.
It was fast and furious, as you said.
Oh, it was. And Kelly was there to experience it, and Matthew was texting me and texting his dad, and they offered him the job, and so.
It was exciting.
Kelly was right there when we got the news.
So you knew first. I guess I did.
Kelly knew right after me.
I knew pretty quick. So, but it was exciting.
Thank you, Kelly.
Well, thank you for sharing that experience with me. Also, you touched on the seniors in spring. I also would like to touch on our students in spring, whether it's elementary all the way up to high school. This is the time of year, I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's like the sun is out and students are out playing, and sometimes they, you know, the fall and the bumps, or they're in the classroom and have spring fever, and decide to throw tissue boxes across rooms or something like that. We had an experience today with a student, and he's a very good boy. And I was like, why did you, he didn't know why, you know? But I just encourage you guys just to think, you know, before you make your actions. And you mentioned living with the seniors. actions and, um, you mentioned living with the seniors. Well, I live with a teenager right now also, so good times. So anyways, I just wanna, um, and also encourage our teachers to stay strong and, and just finish out this year. We're almost there. Okay, and we're gonna move right along now, um, to our disciplinary matters. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placements list for students through March twenty-four, fourth, twenty-seventeen. Ms. Shulley, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, they're in the room.
Okay, good. Okay. And there aren't any? There aren't any? Well, this is a wonderful day because there are no expulsions. Okay, all right, good. There being, there being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the motion passed five zero, the meeting is adjourned at seven oh one.